As everybody to rise with the pledge of allegiance followed by moment of silence. As Mr. Vardor will place the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Amen. First on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion? Make a motion. We got a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, recognition. Mr. Dean?
Chairman. Coach Carroll, I think I see you back there. If you'll come on up. I think we were going to recognize them at the last board meeting, but I think they were away, some of them competing at a national event. So I'm going to ask Coach Carroll to come up and recognize the track team that went to the state and the girls brought home another trophy that is a first in Lee County. So we are very proud of you and I'll ask you to recognize all your wonderful athletes and want to say appreciate all the coaches and hard work that you all put in.
Thank you.
All right.
And she's got a bunch of them.
On behalf of the Lee High School Track and Field Program, we would like to say thank you to Mr. Dean and all the school board members for having us here tonight and recognizing the accomplishments of these student athletes. Behind every successful program, there is a strong base of supporters that consists of school board members, school administration, the community, and the parents. We appreciate all the love and support for this program. In order to do something that you have never done, you have to do something you have never done. Seems pretty simple. Ever since the 2024 indoor track and field season, these ladies had one thing on their mind: redemption. Throughout the 2024 outdoor track and field season, these ladies have overcome adversity, displayed tenacity, and came together for the greater good of what was best for the team. What these ladies accomplished, they earned and they worked for it. Each and every one of them played a pivotal role in achieving a state championship title. We are extremely proud of these ladies and what an exciting time it is to be a general. Congratulations and swords up. All right, so first we have Cassidy Hammond. Cassidy was a state champion in the 100 meter hurdles. She was a state champion in the 300 meter hurdles. She was all-state and placed second in the long jump. She was third place was all-state in the 100 meter dash and she was fifth place all-state in the triple jump. She also is a national champion in the long jump, the jump of 18.6 and a half. So. Savannah placed second and was all-state in the triple jump. She was third place all-state in the long jump, third place all-state in the high jump, third place all-state in the four-by-one relay, fifth place all-state in the 200 meter dash, and she was a part of the four-by-four relay that placed ninth.
Apparently if you will ask them to come up and stand in front of everyone. I know they're not bad.
And next we have Bailey Tina. She placed third and was all-state on the four-by-one relay, seventh place in all-state in the 400 meter dash, and she was part of the four-by-four relay that placed ninth. She was part of the four-by-one relay that was all-state and placed third. Kenley Huff. I don't think she was able to make it tonight. She was also part of the four-by-one relay that was third place in all-state. Next we have Addie Carter. Addie placed seventh and was all-state in the shot play. Next we have Madison Gazway, which I don't think she was able to make it, and she was part of the four-by-four relay that placed ninth. Jalen Garrett. I don't think she was able to make it. She placed 10th in the high jump. Julia Brison. She wasn't able to make it. She was also part of the four-by-four relay that placed ninth. Sarah Ely. She was on her way. She'll probably be walking as I say her name, but she was part of the four-by-eight relay that placed 19th state. She was part of the four-by-eight relay that placed 19th state. She was not able to make it tonight. Mia Franklin. She was part of the four-by-eight and placed 19th state. And we have Michael Wolver. Four-by-eight relay that placed ninth state.
Thank you, Shane and Ted. Appreciate it.
All of you.
Yes, congratulations. About everything.
That's one time you definitely have a return of investment, spending all that money on the track and having it fixed and having it resurfaced, and now we show why we do the things that we do. So ladies, we definitely appreciate that.
Amen.
Yes, absolutely.
Next we go to public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Dean, Mr. Vardor. I'm Phil, he's sleeping district three. I gave you the written handout before I'm saying, and I apologize to the vice chairman. I thought Madam Chairman would be a chair. I'd like to discuss the action of the board supervisors to reduce your 2024-25 budget. The budget request by the school board was the minimum required by the state to receive full funding. The supervisors used an old state law to reduce your budget below the minimum requirement. To the best of my knowledge, this is the first time this law has ever been used because the penalty is too great. The law only applies to four school divisions in the state, the divisions below a .20 composite index, though economically the four poorest divisions in the state. The law allows the governing body of these four divisions to reduce the funding of a school division below the minimum requirement by not matching state funds. In Lee County's case, for every 17% reduction in local funds, the system will be cut 83% in state funds. The Lee County Board of Supervisors reduced the school's budget by $581,426. This results in a loss of $2.8 million in state funding to the Lee County School Board. These funds could have been used to approve staff salaries, which are some of the lowest in the state. Lee County's starting salary for classroom teachers for the 2024-25 school year, I believe is proposed to be $41,000. In comparison, Scott County's starting salary for teachers is $46,000, a $5,000 difference or a car payment. Wise County's starting salary is $49,000 or an $8,000 difference. We're getting close to a house making. We're losing beginning teachers and experienced teachers to joining counties because of our salary scale. You might be able to absorb the $580,000 cut from supervisors by eliminating some construction projects, but 2.8 million in state funds is going to be hard to reduce. I don't have any answers. I'm just, I don't think the word has been out there on how much you've really been cut.
Yeah, we're going to get it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Next, for board comments. Do we have any board comments?
Just wanted to say congratulations to the Lee Track and Field and all of their great success and thank you, Mr. Hensley, for your words there. It is definitely, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. $3 million is a lot of money. And so I believe the board over the last several years has made great strides in improving all of our facilities across the county. And when you eliminate that kind of funding, it's going, it's definitely going to be more of a challenge of how we move forward and continue to improve our school system. So thank you for bringing that to everybody's attention tonight.
Yeah, often I echo what Phil was saying about the, about the financial impact of such budgetary action by the board of supervisors. I mean, the reason that it's never been done in Virginia is because there's no rationality to it. It makes no sense. It's not anything that a good business person would do. It just makes no sense and it looks bad and reflects badly on this county. People do not want to come to an area and do not take education seriously. And when you turn down 83 cents on the dollar and you only have to put in 17 cents, you're not making good decisions. And so we're, we're close to the school year starting, so we're not going to disrupt a lot of things, but we're going to have to start planning on how to deal with these types of issues. There's going to be ramifications and I don't know what they're going to be, not willing to speak on them at night, going to have to think about them, be very serious about them, make sure it has the least impact on our employees and our students, but we're going to take care of our employees and our students. And it's just really disappointing. I've lived here pretty much my whole life and to think that my county would be so backward thinking and not look to the future and to be supportive of education is, I say, it's just really disappointing. And I know the board had some complaints about things we spend money on, but what really caused me is that one of the board supervisors that voted for certain projects and buildings now goes to board supervisors' meeting and says, "You're wasting money on that building." Well, I've got the records, he voted for it, so I'll just leave it at that. Anybody else?
Yes, I'm very disappointed in the board of supervisors at Lee County. It's been very embarrassing and humiliating. This is the first time in Lee County history, the state of Virginia history, and I want the citizens of Lee County to know that. I just think it's a shame and I have lost my trust in the Lee County Board of Supervisors.
Anybody else?
Well, I am certainly very concerned about what has happened and it kind of shows that there's maybe a vendetta against the school board for something like this to happen. And I just feel like that if you're serious about being a public servant, you need to do what is best and our children are our future. And if you do not support education, it's kind of like you're cutting off your nose to spite your face for Lee County. Because a lot of people, when they move in here from a different job, first thing they'll ask, "What kind of school system do you have?" Well, you know, we're falling behind right now as I speak and we have struggled for years just to stay up there and we've got to keep our standard up there. If not, there's probably going to be a plan B and it's something I certainly wouldn't want to see happen. And that's all I have to say.
I'm like everyone else here, I don't understand. I mean, I know our county is financially in trouble, I understand that, but our school system is, our kids are our future, like Miss Evers said, and I don't understand it. I know we need to make some cuts and stuff. I hate that they cut the school system because we need the money. You know, the last few years, we've done a lot of improvement to our building. Our building's been in bad shape and stuff and we've done a lot of improvements and stuff and now it's going to seem like we're going to have to stock on some of these, these projects we've got planned to do to help our schools and we need that. But like I said, our kids are our future and to back up on this thing and lose this kind of money. I want to thank Mr. Dean, Miss Belcher, Miss Willis, you know, I've talked to them here and they've assured me, you know, that we're going to be all right. We're going to tighten our belts a little bit, you know, but we're going to be all right. We'll, we'll get through this. And that plan B, Miss Evers, we don't even want to talk about the plan B that's been, that's been thrown out there, you know, because we don't want no, no part of that at all. But we just need to ask God to give us guidance and wisdom, godly guidance and godly wisdom, not worldly guidance and wisdom, that's why we started where we're at today. But godly guidance and godly wisdom, you know, we'll get through this time together and if we're rallied together, Lee County City rallied together, you know, we can come out on top. But we've got to all pour together. We can't pour apart. I mean, I'm upset with the board of supervisors, don't get me wrong, I'm upset bad, but we just got to pour together. Don't let, don't let this get us down. Don't let this get us down. It's just, we can rise above. We can rise above and that's what we need to do, rise above.
We will persevere.
And I hope that the people in the county will treasure education enough to talk to their board of supervisors. That's where, that it can make a difference.
Yes, I agree.
Anything else? No? No, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes of the June 13th, 2024 regular meeting, approval of claims and expenditures, approval of adult meal prices for fiscal year 2025, approval of head start fiscal year 2025 salary scales, and authorize of division superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between July 11th, 2024 to August 8th, 2024. Do we have a motion? Motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have any discussion? All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Any reports of the board? None? Let's go to reports of the division superintendent. Mr. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, all the operations update, I think you all know, we've got a lot going on. Maintenance, working all over the place. I think we're getting close within the next week or so of winding up the HVAC project at Dryden. They started working on the wood and eln knob, hope to have it ready when school starts. We have the air conditioning installed and functioning at Lee High's gym. I think Miss Garrett went over there and said it's a whole lot better than it used to be.
We'll be able to watch volleyball now in Camper.
Might not break a sweat going to watch a sporting event in the gym now, so I want to thank everybody that was involved with that. You know, Mr. Pluton on maintenance, Mr. Sampson, John and Seth Haynes that helped us put that in there. It's going to be a benefit there at the high school and gym at Lee High. We had all kinds of other projects going on, so if you've got any questions on those, just let me know. Transportation update, been trying to get all the buses and the fleet ready to go. So speaking of that, I'll talk about it here in a minute on bus drivers, but any questions on transportation, I'll be glad to answer those.
How near, how near is bank the operating bus?
The one, one is fixed. The other one, we have not had any trouble out of, but the one that was fixed, we had to send it off, we've got it back. Not had any trouble out of since we got it back. So they've been doing good. Like we had to send some classes on those because they just operate completely different than the diesel buses that we've got, but one we did have some trouble out of, the one other one we did not. So I've got a question on that here just in a minute. Summer work hours, next week is our last week of working 10-hour shifts, Monday through Thursday. After that, we'll go back to eight to four. So I just want to make you all aware of that. We do that because people start coming back in the buildings and we have five days a week because we'll have a lot of people showing up to register their kids and ask questions and get school going. Project out of Thomas Walker, this was actually, we discussed it at the board meeting a year or better ago, maybe even longer than that. This is fix the intersection there at the far west corner of Thomas Walker's parking lot. We had a bus wreck there sometime back and I think there's been some other accidents down there. VDOTs had it on the books for 2025, but then they came and said they could do it now and I really had to turn it down when they said they could get it done and I think Mr. Vardor's been down there and checked that out. They moved that entrance up toward the fire department to go in the parking lot. It's going to be a whole lot safer for events and for the students driving and I think they've got that paving done yesterday.
Paving's done. It's a wide enough entrance for two buses to go side by side through there now. They widened the entrance of the Thomas Walker Fire Department and all and they're supposed to start the sealing and the striping. They've got approval of funds, apparently, we're assuming, and they're going to start that project next weekend. So just off of you, make sure.
And we're having to seal and stripe the parking lot because where they put the entrance at now, you're going in what used to be an out. So parking spots are all backwards. So they're going to stripe it and seal it and then stripe it, so that project's going to be finished before school starts. In your packet, I mentioned this to you all and I wanted to bring it to your attention. The log school up here above Lee High, and I had asked you all to go by and look at it, there are a number of logs that are rotten or rotting. Fear that we're going to have some issues with that. I didn't know that there had been board action on that, so I put a copy of the minutes in your office packet back in 1992 is when all of that started. The board action was just to follow through on getting the project and getting the buildings here. And then I want to thank Karen for finding this packet that talks about it. I guess I just needed some direction on what to do with that. It's, it's rotting and I mean, we're not in the business of keeping up a log building and don't really want to throw a lot of money at it because I think our money can be used better at other places. There's actually a couple of buildings up where you can't see because the trees have grown up around them. The windows have been broken out of it. So I, I just don't know what to do, I guess. And since the board took the action years ago of starting this, I, I guess I need some direction.
Well, it says that it's the oldest known building to serve as a school in Lee County, so I'm assuming it's that front, most frontward building. I didn't even know, I know that you said that there's multiple buildings. I went and looked in and around. It does have some boards rotting. I didn't even, you can't even see the other ones at all. I didn't even know where they were. I had to call and ask, so I'm, I'm curious. It says that it was given as a gift from the Christian church, offered it as a gift if it were moved and restored. But I don't see anything in there saying that it would have to go back or anything like that, so.
Correct. That's all that we were able to locate. And it was restored. I can say that when I taught at Lee High, late 90s, I took a class up there and, you know, everything was restored at the time and they got the, you know, the feeling of a one-room school, but just over time it started to degrade and, you know, I don't want the building to fall down and it be up there or, you know.
What if we offer it back to what it called Christian church?
We can make contact and.
And if they don't want it, we just have to do what we have to do because we can't have a building falling down, people up there getting hurt or anything else. Or see if the Wilderness Road and State Park, man, has got ties to Lee County and they would want to restore it and have it stay here in the county, if they would take care of the moving and the, and all that. I mean, I hate to see a historical building like that just being torn down, but. It's going to fall down anyway.
Yeah, we need to quickly.
It's a liability right now.
Yes.
We've got no obligation, but they were nothing there in meters.
Not that I was able to see. Mr. Hensley's going to have something to add.
Oh, I was involved in removing the building. And Old Virginia Log homes was very instrumental in moving it and repairing it. You might contact them and see if they have any interest and I think the interest would be in the school, not the barns, but they were the most active party at that time that helped us in the move.
I've got Judy Demar and Tom Thermatic. Let's see what she says and I'll order to go Mr. Dean, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
All right, next is executive order 33 that the governor released this week. It's establishing cell phone free education to promote health and safety for Virginia's K-12 students. Put a copy of that in there. It directs the Department of Education, the Secretary of Health and Human Resources, the Superintendent of Public Construction, the Health Commissioner to start developing and publish model implementation plans. And then each school division will have to adopt policies and procedures by January the 1st, 2025. So I wanted to make you all aware of that. Some divisions have already started that step, but I believe there's a listening session first week of August in Abingdon would be our closest one, or if anyone would want to attend that. So we just wanted to make you aware of that that came out this week. Update on alternative education. We have completed the purchase of a building that the plan is to move alternative education to that building. It will take some time because this building will need some work and we are very close to the start of school. We would look at, you know, if things went perfect, maybe moving at Christmas or maybe at the start of next year, but we have acquired the building that we can put that in, in Jonesville in a more centralized location. The building's big enough that we believe we can put it and the behavior program that has the smaller children up at Dryden that serves the county in it, so we'd be more centralized in Jonesville. Something we have been talking about and working, and working on for, I don't know how long we've been trying to buy a building, but.
There's some sad news.
It's been, it's, not a lot of buildings in Lee County and if you find one and you can remodel it, it's a whole lot easier than trying to build one from scratch and just wanted to let you know on that. Update on staffing. I want to say thank you to Miss Willis and everyone, the principals, everyone who has been involved with the hiring of people this summer. We got an early start and I think it really helped us acquire some good people that will help our students. We still have a few vacancies, but just want to recognize them for their hard work because I mean, you never know what you're going to get when you put out an advertisement for a position. Sometimes we'll advertise a position, we get 20, 25 applicants. Sometimes we advertise a position, we get none. So it's been a challenge, but I wanted to recognize all those people and appreciate everything that they have done for us. Last item I've got is to reiterate what several of you have said about the budget. First and foremost, I want to thank Miss Belcher who went with me on all of the meetings to the board supervisors. I think she and I and Rick there, the last one sat there for about four hours, we see when we have the end result there, but want to appreciate her hanging out there with us and making all of that happen. And then all of the board members who have been involved and went to some of those meetings, but it is, it's discouraging because people are going to say that we're getting more money than we've ever received and I'm not going to lie, that's true. But if we are here and everybody else is here and we move up a little and they move up a lot, we're further behind. And we have really good people and we need to take care of them. You know, if you're a young person starting out and you go and interview Wise County, Scott County, Lee County, and all three of us offer you a job and you don't have any ties, you would be crazy not to go somewhere else because you're making several thousand dollars. What we can hold against all of those is how we treat people. We try to take care of people. We help them out every way we can and I know that's not a monetary item, but we do try to treat people really good, but we've got to be competitive. That can only go so far because young people starting out, that's what they're, you know, that's their livelihood and that's the rest of their life. The meeting before we finally got the budget approved by the board of supervisors, you all told us we could go ahead and, you know, look at doing a number of roofs, but that's probably off the table because of that money. And it's things that needed to be done because I have worked in this school division for 26 years. I have lived here my entire life, but things have been neglected. And when you neglect something, the end result, when you actually have to, and when it really makes you pay, it's going to be a whole lot more. You can pay and maintain something and keep it up. It's a whole lot cheaper than it is if you just let it go and then you've got to replace it and that's ultimately what we ended up having to do with a number of roofs and, I mean, they were just beyond fixing. And we've. And we've got a number that needs to be done, but that takes money. I don't wanna do things that people don't wanna do either and if you're good, I'm just gonna save it. I mean, you're gonna have to look at everything in the future if you don't have the money to keep every school operational. Nobody likes closing schools. I'm not recommending closing schools. I'm recommending that everybody talk to their member, board member, board member on the supervisors and say, make education a priority.
Yes.
We have schools that I would put up against anybody in the state. We won't have schools we can put up against anybody in the state if we don't fund them Yes, we're getting more money, but you have to be competitive. When everybody else is getting more money or a lot more money than you're getting, you can't be competitive. We don't waste money. I mean, you can look at the things that we've done and I don't think we've wasted anything. Ms. Belcher and I, or as tight as anybody that I know, I don't like spending money. I don't like paying taxes, but if I can see what you're paying a tax for, I'm okay. If you take my tax dollar and you use it for something that is beneficial, I'm okay.
Amen.
Still don't like it, but I'm okay.
Sure.
I saw earlier this week that the governor had approved some money for, I think, a water project in Lee County and a sewer project on the western end. He said it was, you know, you've gotta have infrastructure to get jobs and to get businesses to come in, but you've also got to have education. We are surrounded by Kentucky, Tennessee and, you know, vet school's wonderful and people come to the vet school, but if our education isn't where it needs to be, they can stay in Claiborne County, they can stay in Bell County. We've got to put education as a priority. I talked to one man and he said, well, you all don't make anything. And I said, well, we do everything to make stuff. If somebody can't read, if they can't ride, if they can't, you know, do the things they need to do, they're not gonna make anything anyway. We do all of that. We teach people how to read, we teach people, I mean, I hate to say it, but we also teach people how to act a lot. I mean, and that's not easy anymore because, I mean, some people that we do more behave than others, but education's a priority. I told the Board of Supervisors I would not be doing my job if I didn't go and ask for every penny and that's exactly what Ms. Belcher and I did. It's disappointing, but I think this year, we're gonna have carryover money that is state money that, you know, that comes back to us. We checked with the State Department and we know that's correct. And I think we can continue everything that we've got going on this year. However, if we don't have the funding in the future, I think everything's on the table. And that's hard for me to say because I was a principal at St. Charles and I know that's the smallest school in the county. The Board of Supervisors, I think it was the meeting that Ms. Garrett and Ms. Ely was at, said they wanted to have, it might have been the one that Mr. Varnador was at, forgive me if I get it wrong, but they want to have, you know, a number of meetings and us work together. That's fine, but I think that we need to be open and honest and early on so we know what path we need to take. And if you're gonna fully fund us, you know, we can keep doing the things we're doing because we were making good strides. If you're not, we need to know that and we need to know what our plan is. So Chairman, that's all I've got on my report.
Okay. Next we move to action discussion items. First, action opinion to approve fiscal year 2025 budget. Do we have a motion?
This is the revised budget. After the Board of Supervisors told us exactly how much money they were gonna give us, I've got to ask you all to approve that budget since the one you all approved is not active.
Got a motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, action opinion to approve fees for the 2024-2025 school year for school board policy J and student fees, fines and charges.
Mr. Chairman, you have a copy in your packet of the fees from the three high schools. I ask that you approve those as presented.
We have a motion.
I submit.
Secondly, any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Action opinion to pursue the acquisition of two electric buses at no cost and upgrade charging stations.
Mr. Chairman, we mentioned this last time, but the reason I put this back on there is because of the funding cut. The buses are at no cost. It's through an EPA grant. The buses don't cost us anything. Value of the buses, Ms. Belcher helped me, 300 and some thousand a piece. So six, seven hundred thousand dollars value of buses that we're gonna get. We would have to upgrade our charging stations because we have to, we would need for, I think 50, $54,000 is the price of the charging stations. I just need to know if that's what you all want to do because there would be two buses at 54,000 or we don't take the buses, we use the money for something else. A new diesel bus is 120-ish.
So you basically, instead of you'd be able to, it'd be the cost of three charging stations to get one bus, basically.
Yeah, ish. I mean, we're gonna be able to get a charging station and two buses for 50 or two buses would cost you 240. It makes sense to me, but some people don't like electric buses. I mean.
And we're gonna have to take two active buses off the road.
You have to take two currently used buses and make them, take them out of commission. What we would do is find the two oldest buses that are at the end of their life and we're gonna have to replace them soon anyway and, you know, not replace a bus that has a whole life to it. But I wanted to make sure you all were aware we're gonna have to spend some money because I don't think we'll get it free like we did last time.
54,000 in total for all the charging stations?
Yes, we already have two.
Okay.
I feel like that, you know, it's hard to turn down the grant money for that for just 54,000 on our part.
Especially for 800,000 for the bus.
Yes.
I just wanted to make you all aware, make sure you're all on board with it.
What's the warranty on those buses?
Uh.
10 years?
10 years on the battery and, you know, they towed the other one back up there that we had problems with and we did go get it because we could go over and get it quicker than they could get it back to us, but, and our guys have been trained.
I'll make the motion that we do it.
Okay, opposite second discussion. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Civil War Trail signage at Jonesville Middle School. Mr. Dean.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Roddenberry and Ms. Jones with us tonight. I met with them a few weeks ago and I would ask you if they would come up. I know that you all have seen the signs when you have been out traveling about the Civil War. They had approached me about putting one at Jonesville Middle School for the Battle of Jonesville. I'll ask them if they would like to elaborate on that and tell us a little bit more about it because it was very interesting the time I got to spend with you.
Thank you. I'm Ken Roddenberry, this is Becky Jones. We represent the Lee County Historical and Geological Society. Madam Chair Ely, Vice Chair Heinz, board members, thank you. We're here to ask the Lee County Board, School Board permission to install a Civil War Trail sign at the western entrance of the Jonesville Middle School along the existing sidewalk. I have a map here. On this map is a circle area.
Thank you. I do, you're good, thank you.
All the circles are just my circles. They're not, they'll be different from one to another, but it's the area that we're looking at, at Jonesville. The sign would be approximately three feet by four feet. It'll be on two posts, slanted about waist-high. Some of you have seen those. It would be an interpretive sign describing the events of the Battle of Jonesville that took place on January 3rd, 1864. We know of no other type sign in the area that talks about the battle as an interpretive. There are some signage there or monuments at the town cemetery, but that's pretty much it. The known battlefield extends from the Baker Farm, the David Baker Farm on Kurt Russell Road, north northeast across parts of the middle school property. The Milburn, or the Dickinson Milburn House was the actual union headquarters at the time and the battle occurred around, initiated at the Baker Farm, moved to the Milburn House and then on over the hill behind it to the Old Harlan Road and finished with a surrender at the, between the Old Harlan Road and Cumberland Bolt Park. So that kind of gives you a perspective of what we're talking about. Probably 90, 95% of all the area is private property. We believe the Jonesville Middle School's west entrance would be an ideal location for these reasons. The entrance is wide. It accommodates two-way traffic at that area. There's ample parking along the shoulders, so wouldn't necessarily mean a new parking lot. There is an existing sidewalk that foot traffic, people could walk to and the area has a high visibility, so I think those are all pluses. The Civil War Trails is a nonprofit organization who's been, who have been working with communities since 1994, sharing their stories and connecting visitors with small towns. The CWT has over 1,200 interpretive signs across six states. Lee County has two signs, one seminary, one in Keokha. We would be included in their interpretive map guides, their paper guides, their website, which covers a far wider reach than what we currently have. The fee for doing this is a membership fee and it would be underwritten by the Lee Historical Society. It's 3,500. We do, they will require an annual supportive sponsorship. I think it's three or 400 dollars a year. But we feel that good about this. We've talked to Superintendent Dean, Lightaway, about location. We've reached out to BDOT and we're currently waiting for them to give us an idea of where the Lightaway boundary is. We think we know where it is along the sidewalk, but we want to be sure. Do you have any questions? Do you mind answering?
I think it's amazing to know the history of that. I used to go to the reenactments that we had and I appreciate you all's hard work of bringing this up. I think it'd be a wonderful thing to have a sign there.
Mr. Chairman, I hope to have an answer from BDOT like Mr. Roddenberry said, but we haven't received, but I don't think it takes formal action, Mr. Will, Mr. Burge will tell me if it does, but I would just like your all's blessing if we get that, just to move forward with the project and, you know, give Mr. Pendergrass, make sure, you know, he's aware there too, but I think it will help all of us and another reason, you know, come to Lee County because we do have a lot of history too here as well.
I've already talked to Mr. Pendergrass about it. Just to make specific, he's in favor of it also.
I'm for it.
Yes. As president of Lee County Historical Society, I'd like to invite you to visit our beautiful team of seniors to what we're trying to do, to give us all a lot of history. What point do you make? You made the second Saturday of each month, the old friendship church that we're still.
That's the Saturday.
Yes, it's the old friendship church. I like that. It's really interesting, yes. Am I not like this Saturday? We appreciate you and all your doing for the history of their little town of Lee County. It's very, very educational.
So if BDOT gets with me or if they get with you, if they get with you before they get with me, we'll reach out and we'll get, see how we can move forward. We'll do that.
Hey, who's surrender?
Jonesville one. Yeah, Sally one.
The Union surrendered.
Good deal. It's South of Rock.
Yay!
Grumble one.
Grumble one.
I don't know what the timeline of this being situated and all, but I think it would be pretty neat if the Historical Society, if we were able to work it out and they could give a presentation to the students.
Yes.
And make a big deal out of it.
Yes, that would be great, educate the kids.
I love this.
I like that.
Next, we'll discuss the appointment of student or student representatives to Lee County School.
Mr. Chairman, I had some students from Lee High reach out to me and ask about possibility of having student representation on the school board. I put in your packet a copy of the code that allows this. It's a liaison kind of non-voting advisory capacity student position. They can't vote on anything you all do. They can't be used to have a quarrel. A number of divisions across Virginia have student representatives and I did a little research. The way they do that, it varies from division to division. Some of them will have like the student body president, some of them will have an application process and you all pick who you think would be the best and have them represent for a year. Some, I saw one that had, each year they have four different representatives. They serve three-month terms. I just wanted to bring this to your attention and see if you all were good, if I moved forward. You know, everything we do is for the students. Most of them have 10th, 11th and 12th graders that are available or are able to do this. Just wanted to see if that was something you all were interested in. I told the, well, the young men that I talked to that I would bring it before you all. I don't think it's a bad idea because, I mean, the things we do involve the students. We're all adults and a lot of times we have different opinions than the kids do. I'll just be honest with you, a lot of times they know more about certain things than we do and having them and having their opinion, I think, would help us. And if you all want to, I can work with some of the students from both high schools and have a presentation and see if it's something, some policies and procedures that you all would like to present.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's.
As to his question, would they be in closed session?
No, ma'am.
Okay, good. I started to say, I'm not sure there's.
No, they're in open session. They can come and talk to me and, you know, and we start the conversation there, but when stuff goes into executive session, they are excused and are not allowed in the executive session.
And there's a Virginia Code section actually that specifies that specifically, that they're not allowed in closed session.
It's in, it's in the back.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
So I'll get to work with it. I'll work with both high schools and see what we can come up with. Let's all have an excellent discussion items.
Okay, I'll move to go into closed session, discuss personnel in the Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711A1 and student admission in the Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711A2. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.